We will call the meeting to order. If you please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As the weep the flag of the state of Mexico, does he assemble a perfect friendship among united cultures?
Thank you all very much. Like everybody to introduce themselves so it's on the record and we'll start over here with Mr. Casper.
Randy Casper.
Charmaine Monza.
Mary Lou Kern.
Lisa Gallin.
Amy Robel.
Andrea French.
Devin Cruz.
Billy Torres.
Susan Robinson.
Omadeo Soto.
Sam Colombo.
Christiana Pencino.
Christine Fiantina.
David Pincino.
Tony Mitchell.
Thank you all. Welcome. Thank you for being here this evening. Since everybody had a chance to review the agenda, I would like to make one change. And that is to move item number eight up to right below. Item four before five to allow our guests to get back on the roof in a timely fashion.
Change.
Okay. Gallium in a motion to approve is changed. We have a second. Seconded by Mr. Casper. All in favor say aye. Both say. Motion carries for zero. Did everybody have an opportunity to review the minutes? If there's not any changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented. When she moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Go ahead. Motion carried. So. And we'll turn it over. Yes.
We had a request to address the board. From just, I hope I don't say it wrong, Christina Pincino. And Sam Colombo. So if you come up to the the spot up here, the the chair at the end of the table. And feel free to address the board.
On this one.
That way the camera and the microphone can.
Okay. So, so good evening. My name is Christina Pencino and this is my sister, uh, this is the. Um, Sam Colombo. Um, we are with Evolvement, which is a youth. A youth-led movement, um, trying to get tobacco out of New Mexico schools. And one of our, um, campaigns is called twenty-four seven and that's trying to get, um. Uh, tobacco products out of, out of schools specifically, especially. Um, high schools and middle schools because we found that that, um, is most prominent. And I'm a senior from Raton High School, which is just nearby. And, um, so under truly comprehensive tobacco policy. But Nick, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, tobacco nicotine use, possession and distribution is prohibited by anyone, anywhere, anytime, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And within Maxwell Schools, um, we've seen that you've made progress between. Or you made progress towards being one hundred percent tobacco-free. We noticed some, some signatures were walking in. And so one of the main things that districts can do is to have up-to-date policies. And, uh, we want to give a big, a big thanks to you, uh, for updating your tobacco policy back in March. To be truly tobacco-free and meet the P E V standards. Uh, for context, in two thousand twenty-three. Um, the New Mexico Public Education Department approved a rule requiring that all public school districts adopt a comprehensive tobacco-free policy. And that was largely because of Evolvement, Evolvement members. We actually went down there and we spoke in public school board and they were able to get that pass. And so, um, as a partner in resource Maxwell Schools, um, we can offer new resources. Um, to help with this mission, um, we can provide bilingual tobacco-free signs. We have a toolkit. Um, filled with all the resources and other information you might need. And we also have faculty training and cessation resources for students and staff. And, um, and we've actually, uh, recently created a news, a new resource, our. Parent and guardian toolkit, which schools can give to students or guardians if their students are found in violation of tobacco. And nicotine, um, products. And we also offer free presentations, um, to males, to male and elementary school students. So it's not, so it's not just high school. Um, we are a full. Uh, district policy. And on behalf of Evolvement, uh, we thank you for taking the time to learn more about the twenty-four seven campaign. And we hope that we can continue to help Maxwell Municipal Schools with enforcement and if, um. And implementation of these new rules. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and yeah, if you, if you have any questions, uh, we'd be glad to ask.
Does your toolkit and resources also address vaping?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I think it's, um, I think it's mainly vaping just because, um.
That's what tends to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sounds great. And so for more information on presentations, do we contact you or do we contact Sam or how do we get ahold of you?
Um, I'm, I believe. I believe you can contact, uh, Sam.
Okay.
Um. Their email is, um. It's, it's sam@twentyfourseven@newmexico.com.
Okay.
Bye.
Yeah, you can leave that though.
Okay.
All of you.
You can leave any, all of that with them too.
Thank you very much. Great job.
How many, how many students in Raton are involved in the program, Mr. Casper?
Um, I, I'm the only one, uh, for right now where, um, we actually have a training this Friday because, um. I was the lead. Um, I actually came into the, came into the program. Um, when my school wasn't, um, a partner, I was in online school, but I was still Raton. Um, and we were, just this year, we were able to get them to be a partner with us. Um. So we actually have a training this Friday to try and get more people involved.
Wow. And if we had students that we wanted to train to also be speakers in the program, is that something that would be available as well?
I believe so.
We could.
Yeah, and we have a partner school in, um. Los Lunas, um, and some of the students from the other high schools will come to that training too.
Gotcha.
Um, so I believe like students from Maxwell would be able to, if they could make it to the Raton training, they'd be able to be a part of it. Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Well, thank you guys very much for coming tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Pretty much.
And well done.
And, and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
You.
Appreciate it.
And y'all are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting or if you'd like to go and watch the Raider Cowboy game, we understand.
It's you.
Not watching the Raiders.
Thanks for having us. Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Nice meeting you all.
You too.
It's a pleasure.
You. Bye.
All right, moving on, um, didn't have any other requests for, uh, addressing the board, but is there anybody here that has anything that? Hearing from the delegation? If not, we'll move on. Moving on then to our consent agenda, business report, uh.
Um, the NMFA statement is not included in the packet. It came in emailed Friday afternoon. Um, but all three statements reconciled with no problems. Um, we have a couple of. Our RFRs on hold, um. Fresh fruits and vegetable, we're waiting for them to finalize the application. Title two, you can only submit after. The conference is completed. So while I paid for the registration in October. Um, the expenditures for travel didn't take place till November, so I have to wait on that one. And, um, I didn't. Submit for our capital outlay, our geo bond. Because, um, we did receive a refund from the. R A I, the company that put out the plans. You buy the plans and if you return them, you get your money back. Well, two firms didn't return them, so that money goes to us. And then we're going to get billed from Decker. So rather than having a low period and a high, I kind of want to do them together where. The invoice for the services match the payments that came in. So that's why I didn't do that one. And, um. Everything else in the, the reimbursements were just sent out last week, um, and some of them have already been approved. Nothing has come in. Um, we did receive our. September reimbursements for. Um, cafeteria and the universal free lunches on the twelfth and the tenth. And the refunds came in today. Um, any questions on our expense vouchers?
I didn't.
Okay. So our first bar is an increase. Um, during the audit. The, this auditor, every one of them looks at something a little different, um. Recommended that we post our commodity. Commodities that we receive as a revenue and an expense. And when I contacted P E D to ask them about that. Um, she wasn't sure what we're supposed to do. And then five minutes later, she said, if you check the P S A B on such and such a page, it tells you to post revenue and expenditures for. Commodities. So that's what this. Uh, bar seventeen is, is for the allocation that we received for commodities. Bar eighteen is, um. A P S C O C award for security infrastructure. Bar nineteen is a decrease. Um, in our fresh fruits and vegetable allocation. That's it for bars.
Any questions from Susan? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to review the consent agenda. I make a motion. Motion by Lisa, second. And by Shar, all in favor say aye?
Yeah.
Both say. Motion carries for zero. All right. Well, moving on to old business project.
At the last meeting, um, I told you that we had. Um, an appointment on. November nineteenth to go to the P S C O C meeting for phase two funding for the construction of a new site. P S C O C canceled their November meeting and so we have been bumped to December eleventh. Unfortunately, that already puts our timeline a month behind schedule before we've even signed a contract. So we are now scheduled for our phase two funding award, December eleventh. Um, if anybody would like to attend that meeting, you're welcome to go with us. All documentation has been turned in to P S F A and they did have it prior to their deadline for that November meeting. Teacher housing, the two spots that we are waiting on from, um, home spot, the vendor for the teacherages. The, we picked out the finishes and all of the options for the two houses. They were ordered. Delivery is about eight weeks from when we did the ordering and that's been about two weeks. So the houses should arrive in approximately six weeks-ish, probably right around the first of the year. Um, as soon as he gets the confirmed drawings from them, he will go ahead and pull those permits. And then start the limited, um. Site. Prep that needs to happen for those two houses to come. Um, I had a meeting today with us and the village and our project manager. And the villages engineers that are working on the utility and roads projects. The. One of the things that was kind of up in the air as we were going out for R F P for the new school. Was what was going to happen to get the utilities up to the edge of the property for the new school. Because no state funding from the school side can be used to bring those utilities to the property. It, we can't pay for anything that's off-site. We can only pay to bring the, the utilities from the property line up to the school building. The village was working on, um, some grants and some capital outlay money. To get the funding to be able to take the utilities from where they are now. Increase the capacity of, for example, the sewer line, the water lines, to then bring them to the edge of the property. So as we were going out for R F P and doing the original design work, we weren't sure which pot of money was going to come in first. So when we did the R F P, we went ahead and had the contractor do a bid lot. To bring the utilities from where they currently reside up to the property line. And then we were going to do a agreement with the village for us to pay for that, but then for them to reimburse us when their funding came in. And talking with them today, it looks like their funding is going to come in on time so that it won't impact our project. P S C O C understandably didn't want to approve a forty million dollar building project. If we couldn't promise them that the utilities were going to be there. So the village does have, they're waiting on the final award letter from D F A. But they have the confirmation, um. That the funding will be released. They're looking right around the first of the year. The utility should be able to be at the property line by about March. Under the village's funding. So. We have kind of a plan A and a plan B just to make sure that our project doesn't go off the rails. Plan A is the village has the funding. They're going to go ahead and prioritize the utility line from where it is now to the edge of the school property. Have that done by March so that it doesn't impact our timeline of clearing and leveling that site, getting the. Concrete and everything poured before the lines need to be pulled in. Plan B, if by some, something happens and their funding doesn't come in on time. We still have that bid lot sitting out here from the contractor that bid our job. That would be then issued as a change order instead of us actually accepting that bid lock now. That would then be a change order to be added onto the project. It would be covered under the P S C O C funding. And then the village would have to reimburse from that side. So in going to P S C O C in December, we can tell them with confidence, yes, the utility line will be there. Rather by point A or point B. It will be there and that shouldn't be a hang up in awarding our fund. So that's where we currently are in terms of, um, the. Project update. Any questions on? Those outstanding items? Those are kind of the big, the three big pieces that are up in the air right now.
No, what was the manufacturer of the houses again?
Home Spot.
That's right.
And that was the same company that did the houses in Mosquero. And there were Camden Wines as well.
Any questions?
They're going to come up root foundation and all that kind of stuff they'll have ahold of prior to that.
The Home Spot? Yes, sir. And we'll do a onsite, um, pre-construction meeting. Once he's got the permits pulled. P S F A will come out and be a part of that. We'll make sure that the village and their engineers are a part of that so that all the parties are there together. Everybody understands exactly where everything's going and we have no issues there.
Far as utilities and stuff, it's all there.
Yes, sir. Those are already on the site.
I think part of them are. Enough for two more houses.
Yeah, well, they'll have to pull them from the, the alleyway, the easement. But it's there. And Baca Valley has been working to relocate the, um, fiber line. That currently runs right along the east-west. Um, length of the south side of the new school property. Their line runs basically right where we're going to need to dig for a fence. So they've moved that over so it's on the easement and they are in the process of doing that right now so that they can then abandon that line that's on school property.
Hopefully there's no water lines in there.
Or no more water lines. Well, a big shout out to Baca Valley too because. With them doing these changes in that, um, they saved us a bunch of money.
And it's a lot of money on their end.
Yeah.
Absolutely. That's a lot of money. They're, they're feeding the bill for.
Their, their foot and bill is probably saving us about a hundred grand.
Yeah.
So.
And they're rushing their timeline to make sure that it's done so that it doesn't impact our timeline.
So, so it's a big thank you to them. They've always been a good partner for the school.
Most definitely.
Anything else? Questions? Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to other business then, superintendent's report.
Okay. Last week, New Mexico P E D released school designations. And I am proud to say that our elementary and middle schools were both hit as spotlight schools. That means we are in the top twenty-five percent of schools in the state. Our high school was, uh, labeled traditional, which is anywhere from the twenty-fifth percentile to the seventy-fifth percentile. They haven't released an overall ranking by the state yet. But in looking at our total point designation, we were really close to the cutoff to make spotlight as the high school as well. So I'm really proud of that. Our, our staff and our students were really hard. Um, and I'm, I'm really, I'm really proud of those designations. We had our, um, Ms. Wick, our food science teacher. Applied for the New Mexico Beef Council, um, beef grant for the, the food science classroom. She was awarded a thousand dollar grant for the classroom. So they'll be able to get a thousand dollars worth of beef and learn how to appropriately. Put your it, cook it. All of that, and she's going to do that in a second semester. Also, when she told the class that today, one student actually got up and started dancing. He was very excited then. Um. We had been talking about that, you know, we did lose our, our counselor this year. Um, but we did increase our social worker coming an additional day a week. And doing some group lessons with our elementary school on some social emotional skills. Um, problem-solving skills, some of those sorts of things. So she did provide a copy of the lesson plans that she was doing last week with the kids and some of their work, if you would like to see that. With our kindergarten and first grade group, she's working on rules and expectations and what it means to be a school family. Those also align with our social studies standards for those grade levels. In second and third grade, they are working on the same concept, but doing a little bit more in depth and talking about. You know, is my, is my problem a big problem or is it a little problem? And kind of quantifying those. And kind of quantifying those and, and how to then problem solve it from that perspective. With the fourth grade, they're talking about relationship awareness and how to resolve conflicts. And so they have some examples of some work that they did here, if you all would like to see that. And then she's also working with the eighth graders through the twelfth graders in doing the next step plan that's required for P E D this year. And doing some career exploration and some goal worksheets. And then helping them to align their expectations for what they're gonna do after high school to what their overall goals are. And so far it's, the kids are, are receiving it really well. We did have an issue at the end of last week and it's, it's an issue that. We've had for a while. But, um, it's, it's getting to the point where it's, it's a little unmanageable and I need some help. Um. There are a lot of stray dogs around Maxwell and not necessarily stray dogs, I should say loose dogs. Um. As the school campus sits right now, I can't fence the entire campus. I can't fence the entire playground. The new school will have a fence around the playground and it will be more, more secure, but we're about two years off from now. We have a lot of dogs that are coming onto the playground during school hours because they wanna play with the kids, you know? Um, and originally it was, you know, one or two dogs. We would handle it by calling the owner if we knew who the owner was, asking them to come retrieve their dog. Um, we had a couple of staff members who said, I know where that dog lives, I'll run it home real quick, watch my class. Um, or a high schooler who would say, hey, that's my grandma's dog, I'll go take it home real quick if that's okay. But on Thursday, we had eight dogs on campus. During lunch recess, two of those dogs got in a fight on the playground. And one of them was running towards the kids, trying to get away from the other dog. Jumping on the kids, climbing on their laps, trying to get away from the other one, and of course, the other dog followed. Now thankfully, it was two chihuahuas. So I went out and broke up that dog fight. And thankfully, the kids reacted really well and they followed my directions. Nobody was yelling, nobody was running. And it didn't make the situation worse. Luckily, in that situation, nobody got bit. Um. Later that afternoon, I got called to the playground again as two different dogs were, um, stuck together. And needed to be separated. We're now at the point where there are so many dogs that are on campus during the day. I don't know who they belong to. I can't contain them all. Um, and, and I need some help. It's gotten to the point where it's a real safety issue. We have dog feces on the campus all over the place. There's one dog that somehow is. They're pooping on the ramp up to the main building and actually getting it on the railing. Don't know how they're doing it, but it's happened twice now. So I didn't want to just bring. A problem to the village. I wanted to try and come with some solutions. So I went down to the village office today and I talked to Ms. Taylor. And we thought that maybe a good first step would be to write a letter to the community. To go out in the water bed. And explain the issue that we're currently having and, and ask for people's help. Ask them to, you know, to make sure that their dogs are contained during school day. Um. You know, there's some other things that we can possibly look at down the road as well. But maybe that's a, a good first step. So I drafted a letter that if it's all right with you all. I would sign and, and Ms. Kern would sign as board president. The board, um, the village council was originally scheduled to meet tomorrow. They moved their meeting to next week. So I would then take the same letter to the village council and ask them to sign on as well, um. And then this would go out in the end of November, water bill to the community. And then, you know, we need to look at. What do we do under that? You know, on Thursday, I went and tried to get those dogs. I threw one of them in the, the bed of the, the maintenance truck. And at least got them separated for a little bit. Went and got some rope and tried to tie them to the outside tables, but. One of the dogs clearly had never been tied before and I thought it was gonna strangle itself. Um. We tried to make the fence where the H vac units are at the back of the auditorium. We tried to close up any holes in there. But the little chihuahuas were able to get out in there, so I couldn't contain them there either. Um. So, you know, we're, we're looking at some other options of what we could potentially do. I know there is an ordinance. On the books for the village about not having your animals loose. Um. So it's an issue I'm gonna take to them as well and, and hopefully come up with some additional solutions as well. And I'm open to any other suggestions anybody has.
They have a, a, a leash. Because I always kept my dog. I got, yeah, and everybody else, and I walk, I mean, right there by Shantel, I thought. There was my dogs that kept me.
Yeah.
Dog, that's why I walk.
Yeah.
But I took it to the village and they don't have it, they have dog catcher.
Right.
So there's nothing they can do. And people just don't tie their dog, their, their dogs, they're gonna just. Everybody's dog is running loose.
Hmm, I think the only way this is gonna work is, you know, the village does have fine. Because, you know, people don't like to pay, you know, and so if there's a fine. Put this on fine in there, you know, so probably it will work a little. And they protect the dogs to keep them inside.
So they're, they're, they're gonna have to. Designate somebody to do that. I mean, even though the sheriff's office is the law enforcement for the community. The sheriff's office cannot enforce municipal.
Ordinance.
Ordinances.
But you have to suffer in some ways.
Yeah, exactly.
And the routine, routine, main society won't take dogs from Maxwell. And so, I mean, it's, it's not a, it's not an easy issue to solve. But I'm hoping that if the community understands the issue that it's, and the safety concern that it's putting our kids in.
It's protecting children too.
Yeah. But maybe they can help us out.
Even for the adult, because if there's a lot of people walking around and we start getting the dog fighting and you're trying.
Well, and thankfully, it was two chihuahuas that got in a fight, so I could put one under one arm and one under the other and, you know, it was all right, but. You know, thankfully, it wasn't some of the bigger dogs.
Do we have film?
Actually, I, I didn't check that. I bet you there it is. Damn, thanks.
Might help identify the owners of the dogs, is what I was.
Well, and, and, you know, it got to, there were. Ms. Adalco and I on Wednesday, two of them were, and. It's at the point where some of them, like you open the door for the kids to go into the cafeteria and the dog runs in and runs back into the kitchen and now we have a health code violation. Um, but I had one of the tan chihuahuas, she had another tan chihuahua. We thought we had them all and another kid yelled, and there goes a third one down the playground. And I'm like, there's a third? And it, it's at the point where there's, you know, originally we were able to identify who they belong to and address it with the owner. It's now at the point where there are so many of them. I don't know who belongs to who.
Yeah, there's so many stray dogs and cats.
Yeah.
Everywhere.
I think this is a good start, you know?
Yeah.
Saying. People police themselves.
So I'll let you read the letter and if there's any changes that you'd like to make, I tried to make the letter, um. Factual and point out the, the issues and concerns, um. But if you would like any wording changes, we can also make changes. And then we have a request for the December board meeting. If we could move that one day to Tuesday, the sixteenth. We are looking at having our, um, elementary winter program on that Monday, the fifteenth. If it would work to move ours to the sixteen.
That's probably. Sally, you okay with that?
I won't be back in time.
Girl.
If not, could you call in?
So the sixteen December, same time, six thirty.
Anything else? No, ma'am.
No?
Okay.
Yeah. Questions, Mr. Superintendent?
You know, on the, on the presentation, we had twenty-four seven, that might be something that they can work in there too.
Definitely.
Cause it's unreal, vaping, stuff that's going on.
Hmm. And we haven't had as big an issue with it as some of the other schools. We've got babe sensors in several of our bathrooms. Um. And after we caught the first group. We're cut out pretty quick. Um, but that's not to say they're not doing it. I'm sure they're doing it and we don't even know it sometimes. But. Having somebody come in and do some. Especially if it's other kids that are talking about it.
Hmm.
That might make a, a bigger impact. And I'm thinking there's some in our junior class that might be interested in becoming trainers.
The, the, the meeting is this Saturday, she said.
It's Friday.
It's Friday.
I don't know if I can get them together that quickly, but.
Maybe for the next one, check it out.
Yeah.
Maybe we can both one.
Yeah. Or have that group come in and do a, a presentation and then recruit from there.
Hmm.
Great. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have no consent agenda. Next regular meeting will be December sixteen at six thirty P M, not fifteen. If there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Shar, second.
Absolutely.
Led by Randy, you beat out. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Both say. Meeting is seven oh two.